I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will then go on to 2.0 agenda group.
You two first.
Second.
Then move to second to agenda and vote. All those on camera say aye. Question carry. And now we're going to go on to 3.0, which is our community impact awards. Alright, so, I think we're going to turn over the first one to them.
There we go. I could go off the script here a little bit.
Right back in time.
Bring it right over here, Bill. That way, these can get a good picture.
There's nobody more enthusiastic. There's enthusiastic people in this world that have coached this guy. You can break his leg, and he'll do everything he's not supposed to do. He'll show up for every practice regardless, but it's been a pleasure to know him for longer than just tonight, for sure. So, the award is for community impact. One remarkable aspect of Kelly's character is her remarkable work ethic, which she applies to every task she undertakes, absolutely. Regardless of the nature, as a member of the geography club, Kelly has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to promoting cultural awareness and understanding among students. Through his initiative, the club has created captivating slideshows highlighting the unique cultural identities of various countries represented within our school community. These presentations not only educate, but also celebrate the diversity that enriches our school and learning. What truly sets Kelly apart is her acute awareness of other students and her genuine desire to help. Her empathetic nature drives him to continually seek ways to provide access and opportunity for success for those around him, whether it's offering guidance, mentoring, or simply lending a helping hand. Kelly consistently demonstrates his unwavering dedication to ensure that every student feels valued and supported. His willingness to go above and beyond to assist others, particularly those with special needs, is too formidable. Through his actions, Kelly embodies the spirit of compassion, inclusivity, and community that lies at the heart of our school. Thank you very much.
Got to get that picture, you two. Can you show that to her? Yes, you are.
Alright. I have Kelly, not Ash. Where's he at, sugar?
My girl.
Alright, Kelly consistently exemplifies--
That's weird.
She exemplifies the qualities of kindness, thoughtfulness, and calmness in all that she does. She not only embarks on encouraging students, but also fosters the environment of passion and community underneath. Her students are not just learners, but her class members have part of her extended family, and even long after they have moved on, Kelly continues to offer support and guidance whenever needed. Kelly's exceptional kindness skills and calm demeanor make her an invaluable asset to our school community, whether serving our communities such as Guiding Coalition, Conscious Society Team, RTI, or ALIS. Kelly consistently demonstrates her commitment to her community and special for that education experience of our students. Her diplomatic approach and supportive nature make her a trusted colleague and a positive partner for new ideas and strategies. One of Kelly's most admirable qualities is her relentless pursuit of what is always best for her students. She is an early adopter of new ideas and strategies, always striving to find innovative ways to support students academically and socially. Kelly goes above and beyond to ensure that every student receives the personalized attention and support they need to thrive both in tech and outside the classroom. As a lifelong member of our community and a proud graduate of St. Helens High School, Kelly is deeply invested in the success of her students and our community as a whole. Her dedication and commitment to excellence serve as an inspiration to us all, for guiding us to the profound impacts that one individual can have on the lives of others. Congratulations.
I've been giving them to you.
Alright, so now, Kelly. Shayna, come on. Hold on to that, I'm going to do a secret thing about it. Hi. It's alright, guys. Alright, so Shayna has consistently done volunteer PR to lead by example, demonstrating a remarkable ability to see the possibilities where others may see it wrong for her. Her creative outside the box approach to problem solving has not only inspired her coworkers, but has also paved the way for transformative change within our community. One of Shayna's most notable qualities is her willingness to do whatever it takes to support those around her, whether it's offering compassionate gear to a colleague, and either providing guidance and mentorship to students facing challenges. Shayna's unwavering dedication to the welcoming of others is truly genial. As activities director of the God's People Barber, Shayna has significantly-- sorry-- impacted the lives of students and families alike. Through her innovative programming and strong relationships within the community, she has successfully built bridges between schools, families, and the broader community. Shayna's positive impact is felt not only by those directly impacted by her work, but also by the broader community as a whole. Her ability to foster trust and relationship built on mutual respect and understanding and respect to the dedication of her peers. Shayna's efforts have enriched the lives of countless individuals and strengthened the bonds that we might expect.
Congrats, all of you. I do want to say, your business is still right. You came with her, though. Thank you, all three of you. Yes, and if you want to escape for the birthday, you guys can do that, too. And I did one, too. I left the one I got to, too. Alright, well, now we're going to go on to 4.0, which is visitors to address the board. This is a time for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board.
We have a petition, little requests for the board.
Alright. We will now go on to 5.0. This is so loud. Consent agenda.
I'll move to it. I approve.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we will go on to 6.0, new business. St. Helens High School ASV report, which I'm assuming you're doing.
Oh, yes. Is not feeling well, and I trust her with what she said, so I'm really glad she's not here.
Alright, turn it over to you, Lucy.
Totally happy to be here.
Yep. Perfect. Alright, so, let's give a little bit of what March has been like at SAGHS. It hasn't been very long since the last meeting, so despite that, there actually has been quite a bit that's happened at St. Helens High School. These wonderful people, this is a part of our ASV campaign day, excuse me. We have some incredible candidates this year, and I'm saying this not because I just know them personally, but just, I mean, they're just incredible people, working with them and seeing them travel school. Keely Scoville is our ASV president, and I could not be prouder. Our ASV public relations is Brigid Houston on the far right corner. Brigid is very great at what he does. Bjornik McCombe for our secretary, and Michaela Hines for treasurer. And then, we actually had a competition between Clara Warwick and Hayden Warwick for ASV vice president. Both of these candidates are wonderful, and I know them personally, and they both do the hard work. We had about 260-some-odd students vote in total, and the race was off by 1.4%, and Clara got it. So, we were very happy for her, and we're hoping that Hayden will run for senior class president, as we know she will do a terrific job in whatever she does. So, this is our new ASV team. Alright, next up is our Abbott's annual pie day, their pie toss fundraiser. Oh, gosh, I'm on that list. Okay, so what this is, is this Thursday, so tomorrow, we will have pumpkin pies and whipped cream, and students can pay $5 to throw two pies at anyone they choose. And so, we have Dr. Wagner, Mr. Cowman, I'm on that list, so people get to throw pies at me. My friend Piper's on that list. We have a bunch of different wonderful staff that students get to take a little bit of their pint out of restaurant this wonderful day, so we'll update you on how that goes at the next meeting.
Who's making the pie?
I'm just making the pie. I just know that we're getting them, and they're going to taste really good.
Maybe it's just whipped cream.
Maybe, I don't know. They do different things each year.
I just wonder if there's going to be good pictures of each individual.
Oh, yes. I got some great ones last year.
I'll take it.
Yeah. District choir. So, district choir went to districts, excuse me. At St. Helens High School, on the 12th, they performed very well, they have state qualifying scores. I'm really excited to send them off to state here pretty soon. For March, for every student of the month, we have Bridget Kishpa. She is a high caliber student who is fiercely intelligent and highly involved. Her critical thinking skills are top-notch, and her writing and communication skills are the upper levels for high school. She's earned high A.T. scores on the test, and continues to challenge herself and enroll in rigorous classes. And I know Bridget personally, she has always pushed herself to be the best, so she has truly learned others' role. For Becoming the Lion Night, so this is tomorrow as well, and this is for eighth grade students and parents, and it's basically a welcome for incoming freshmen to the school. And that actually reminds me, we had a Becoming Lion Day, where the incoming freshmen got to come to the high school, and we as student leaders got to show them around the school, answer any questions they have. These things are an assembly, and even though things will look different next year, with people in clothing, they still felt really good about knowing, oh, seniors and juniors aren't scary. So, that gave them a nice perspective going into high school. There we go. Our key club is doing a fundraiser currently called Their Candy Grahams. So, they are having these little hoary clovers that they are selling in the commons for $2, and what you can do is you can send any of their of your choice. And on Friday, they will deliver those little grams with two pieces of chocolate and gold coins. And so, that's been really cool, and I need to get mine tomorrow, because I keep forgetting to fund mine. So, I'm excited, and we've had a lot of participation this week. Upcoming is our spring blood drive, so staff and students can donate blood during school hours. And then, anyone that is not a established student, like a community member, you are free to come and donate blood after 3:00 p.m. There will be a sign up for that. It's going to be April 23rd in the old library from 12:30. I'm guessing it goes early, 5:30 or 6:00 p.m. And there will be an email leading up to the donation day with final donation times if you sign up. And that email will come from our current ASV secretary, Piper Paulson. So, if you are interested in doing that, be on the lookout, she will send that. And that is all we have for March, so.
You can clap. We always like clapping, here, get it. Alright, well, then we'll just go on to that 6.2 school reports. Who's going first?
Yeah, we have a couple of our principals out, but I think we have a few people who will step in, and we may be minus a report here and there because of this stuff. But, let's start with early learning.
Well, up there.
Hey, everybody. This is I'm Danny Boylan, the director of early learning. So, it's been a very quick month since we saw each other last. What's been going on in our program is all the events that I told you about at the last one we've got to have. We had our second Ready Freddy event and for kindergarten transition event after Friday. Our numbers increased even more from the first one at Lewis &amp; Clark. Each day, I continue to get more and more families signing up. Our Columbia City one is next month, but we encourage all of our families to go to all of them so that they get different experiences. So, the first one was social and emotional themed, this last one was literacy-based, and the next one will be science-themed, and so that each one's a little bit different. Our third one, we usually have lower numbers, a little bit because it's Columbia City, which is a smaller school, and also because baseball season starts. Last year, we made a mistake of the weekend we planned was also the weekend of the Mega Ed Council, so we made sure not to make that mistake this year. And so, we're hoping, I think I got it a week before the jamboree of the kickoff of baseball, so it should be good this year for our numbers. And then, last night, we had our second big family event for our toddlers and preschoolers. We had our glow night, which was a huge success. I've had teachers all across the district telling me all the pictures that they're seeing on Facebook of the event, because we had five families go home sick with fever yesterday, and the parents were devastated that they were going to miss this event. I think they were more sad than the kids were. But, we ended up having 118 people at our event last night, and knowing that we only had 45 families in our program, so it was a great turnout. And so, what I'm working on next is trying to figure out how to top that. Like, each one seems to be a little bit better, and so each year, and so now I've got to figure out our main and final event, how it's going to be even better and bigger for these families, so. Should have ended with the glow party, but I just went by parent response, and parents wanted a glow party, and that's what we did, so our next one will be very hip, so that's our Build a Castle.
I mean, can she share those pictures with Stacy's?
Okay.
Publishable.
I've actually--
They're pretty amazing.
The parents just started sending them to me, so that I'm making a slideshow for it to send out, but I'm going to send Stacy a few of them.
And then, bring that here next time, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Martin.
Goodie. I'm Jeanne from Queens, the elementary, and happy to be with you for this meeting. And our All-Star with a Challenge of the last month is definitely an illness for our building. We got hit with a stomach bug, and at first made the rounds of kids, and then made it to staff. But, we're excited for better weather, and hopefully a turning point with illness. Exciting things happening in our building. We have three students who are graduating from title, which is great to see that growth and progress for them. Our first graders and the other Peps just had an Omsi experience, where Omsi came past with a planetarium in our gym, which was really exciting. And Mrs. Isis, third grade, Plax has had great growth in reading. She was really excited to share that with me today. And in the same theme as preschool, we have a glow dance coming up this Friday, put on by our PTO at the community hall, and we are very excited for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodie, name is Jeanne Martin from Lewis &amp; Clark. Well, I'm excited that I have quite a few things to share with you. So, one of the things that's really been happening that we have a lot of excitement behind is in first and second grade. So, our first and second grade teacher teams, and along with our title teacher and our head of systems, have really been working on programs around reading that have to do with walk to reading, really working on interventions for our students, as well as extensions. And they have done some phenomenal planning, so if you come to our school at the right time, you will see kids moving and getting into different groups and being able to learn, and just be really excited about the growth that they're making at their level and where they are at the moment. So, it's been very encouraging, and with that, we have really incorporated that into our PLC work around cycles of learning, and so it's really neat to see the data and all the work we've been doing on Wednesdays start to come together and really start to move our practice. So, that has been a real highlight, and they're very excited to have that going on. The kids are really excited, it's a great time. And we also are excited that after our last family reading night, we are wild about reading, that we actually are going to do another one this spring, a different thing. We'll have some different things going on, but we're just starting to get into the groove of planning that, and we hope to have just as good of a turnout as we did the first one. It was wildly successful. And so, we'd like to continue with that. And then, we have had some teachers that have been involved in the work with Children's Institute and Loose Parts, and so, we have some teacher leaders who have been sharing that with K1 and 2, and how to use loose parts, and it is just what it sounds like, all those little things you find, buttons, coins, all those things, and how you incorporate that into learning, not just inquiry around numbers, and letters, and shapes, and sizes, and all those things, and how that can work at all different levels. And so, our teachers are now collecting data, and our first and second grade teachers have come on board with what Kewger Garden has been doing, and taking it to that next level, and are really excited about that. And that's kind of a shout-out also to Danny behind, who's been really instrumental in that work. And then, we have had a partnership that I know has been long-going here in St. Helens, but we really appreciate the partnership with the city of St. Helens, and the police department, with our traffic, and as a district, the communication that's been going out to parents about some changes in signage, and how our roads are marked, and we're trying some things, and I think that they are working, and we'll keep reminding our families about our expectations and what we hope to have happen, and drop off and pick up, and so that will go smoothly. And then, this, I know-- This next quarter, we are going to be focusing on kindness. And so, we're really excited to have a focus on kindness throughout the school, and we'll be doing weekly kindness awards for every class at every grade level. So, there'll be some certificates, and I'll be sharing those with classes, and we're just going to have a school-wide focus from here on out until the end of the year. And our challenge, there are a lot of great trainings coming up for our teachers that teaching and learning is provided, and every time one of those trainings comes up, we fill our spots instantly at those departments. So, it's exciting, but it's a challenge, because I always have a waiting list of teachers who are like, next time around, or if there's an open spot, I want to go. And so, that's a really good problem to have, but it's a challenge, because we want to keep everyone excited about moving forward in learning, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I have an idea for your next book, Scrubbing After.
Okay.
Glow Night.
Oh, that's a lot. No, that would be wildly--
Glowing reports.
I feel like I should get up and just say ditto. It's funny, we didn't even share notes before I got up here today, but I've got a lot of similar points. I'm Allison Dubuque, from McBride. We have had some real great things happen in the last couple weeks since I've been sitting here. Our junior PTO is working on a coin drag, and they're doing a villains, superheroes, like battle, like whoever gets the most or negative balance, I'm not sure how it works exactly, but I'm sure someone will figure it out. But, the proceeds are going to go to support staff wellness, and the junior PTO has made that decision. They really want to help their teachers, which I think is very sweet and endearing. They really care about the community. And we also just finished up our reading week, Reader's Cross America Week, that we even celebrated with our book fair, and a reading night. We had 290 individuals attend, plus remind this of you, I think some people missed the sign-in table, but I'm really excited about that, also looking forward to our third event of the year in the next couple months. And so, we'll have another book fair and another spirit week to celebrate literacy. And as we've been focusing on that, our teachers, my ask of them has been really beef up their tier-one strategies and what they're doing, and I think I shared this last time I was here, about focused note-taking and using that to help give students an engaging leverage into whatever lesson teachers are working on. And we've had some training, there's a lot of energy and excitement around what that looks like at all grade levels. And I took four teachers a couple weeks ago to an Abbott leadership training, and we were looking at the strategic plan and the academic goals that the district has, and trying to make sense of that for what that means at McBride. We all had different versions of what it meant to be a literate fifth, going to sixth grader. And so, I thought that was really interesting. And so, one of the things we spent some time on today was creating a shared vision for literacy for our building in connection with the strategic plan. And it was time really well-spent, because I think if we don't know what our North Star is, it doesn't really matter what these great strategies are in our classroom. We need to know what we're aiming for. And so, we did some work around that today, and I'm not done with it yet. I've still got about eight different versions of what that vision for McBride looks like, but I'm really excited by the end of the year, I want to commit to you to having that in front of you, what that looks like for our fifth graders, seventh, and sixth grader. So, that's kind of where we are with our academics, again, focus on literacy. One challenge that we're working on is we have some problem-solving things going on in our fourth grade. We're struggling with some good decision-making, and so, we kind of launched a friendship academy for all students, and so, we're doing a lot of reteaching around, just how do we solve problems? How do we show that we're trustworthy, or that we're a kind friend, or we have a lot of empathy? And so, alongside my counselor and my school support specialist, I've been helping support some of that instruction with students, and spending more time out at recess, leading into lunchtime and those authentic conversations with kids to kind of check in and see how they're doing, and support their emotional health and wellbeing. And so, I'm optimistic that by the time they're in fifth grade, we are going to really need to have Abbott ambassadors that are going to be able to lead in a really caring and connected way to the community by the end of the year.
Careful, Chris, over to you.
Chris Boylan, St. Helens Middle School, and I did attend Glow Night. And it was awesome. And yeah, I'm hoping that we have, again, my four-year-old, and I have a four-year-old in the program, and for about seven days, like even the week before Glow Night started, every night it was, yeah, we got to get our clothes ready for Glow Night. Yeah, I'm so excited for Glow Night, and so, wonderful job, early learning, great event. But I'm here to talk about the middle school, and the big highlight, last time I was with you, we talked about district wrestling, and we were off to state, and how our state results, I'm sure many of you have heard. But, St. Helens Middle School sent seven girls and one boy to the state wrestling tournament, and we walked away as girls' state champions. Of our seven girls, all of them placed, and we had three second-place finishes. Those were the highest finishes we had on the girls' side. Unfortunately, some of our girls actually had to wrestle each other on their way, so. Yes. The boys' side, we had one boy attending, and he ended up taking second place. So, a very successful state wrestling meet, and us walking away a state champion is pretty awesome. The next big thing to report on, we were getting ready for outdoor school the last time I saw you guys here, and we are off. We took off outdoor school in sixth grade.
I still get to kick back when I put my feet up on the desk.
Yes, yes.
I have two little kids, gone.
Two of them are there. So, I've heard back, well, first off, I should say, the send-off was excellent. The routines and the systems for dropping off bags, for checking in meds, and doing all that was so well-structured by our sixth-grade team, they've really dialed us in. And we were off to camp, and the first day that they arrived, it was sun and clear. And we were off to camp and the first day that they arrived, it was sun and clear. And so they got to spend some time outside and they sent me pictures of the kids having a blast out on the beach or at least on the edges of the sand and enjoying the sunset. So it was pretty cool. They're at Camp Gruder and Camp Mary Wether in Tillamook and Rockaway Beaches areas. My last highlight that I want to share is a shift in our announcements. So I don't know if you all are aware, but at the middle school, we do daily announcements during our focus class, which is like an advisory class. Every, one of those classes every day starts with about a five-minute announcement from me. I zoom into all the classrooms. I have a team of people that help me put together these really cool slides of interesting stuff that we share with the students, as well as give them reminders of activities and events and everything that's happening in the school every day. And recently, we had an amazing presentation from our high school principal, which showcased a new course catalog and course guide and some really cool stuff. And we really thought on with that piece of information and that really great tool, that we could turn that into some more awareness and some more readiness for our students in terms of their transition to high school. So in our daily announcements now, instead of fun facts, we now have St. Helens High School facts. And we're pulling all of our great stuff that's happening at the high school and putting it into our announcements. So every day, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders get to hear about what they get to look forward to when they get to high school. Yesterday, we highlighted the renovations in the modeling program. Prior to that, we talked about all of the articulated programs that we have. So we're just going to keep building on that. We have a whole month of March that we're going to fill up with wonderful facts about our high school and what's being offered in that new catalog. Yes. When I'm allowed to take pictures and if I get that option, I or if I can have some pictures, I will begin sharing those in the announcements. That's a wonderful idea.
I do a lot of promo. They're getting very special places.
They are. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Hey, Chris, how long do they go to outdoor school? How many days?
They move back on Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon?
Four days.
You don't want them back on Thursday?
They come back Friday after. Enough time to get their gear.
I'm Lisa Tyler, the Director of Teaching Learning, but I'm here for Martin Eamon, who was feeling ill tonight, and wanted you to hear his report. So elementary enrichment opportunities for March and April are robotics and coding. Students will be building robots tomorrow from one to three at the Family Resource Center. And in April, the students will learn then to code them. So please stop by tomorrow from one to three. Our next science night will be April 17th for middle school and high school students. So official times will be determined then. Our middle school arts club students are providing lots of positive feedback on Mrs. Walker's new art class. Currently, her class is at capacity between middle school and high school students at 30. So as mentioned in prior board reports, we are able to add additional elective courses this semester. And we are happy to report that two of Mrs. Douglas's elective classes, music appreciation and computer application, are also at capacity, 40 students in each class. So our staff are continuing to work on getting our homeroom courses up and running. Our elementary teacher has started daily meetings with her students. Her homeroom class has been well-attended. Our secondary staff has split the students up by middle school and high school. Exciting one.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa. Do we have a high school person?
Our two high schools will not have a choice. Kate Wagner is in Washington DC meeting with Rochelators advocating for us. And currently.
All right. Well, then I guess we will go on to our 6.3, the St. Helens School District 502 Business Report. Turn it over to Jason.
Sure. I will literally turn it over to you, but we do have an applicant for our budget committee. And so Mr. Jordan, join us. So you've been provided a copy of the guy's application. And then through public whole fashion, you about the questions you're referring to. But what will happen is the budget committee will just go through and ask you questions. Like take a moment, please, to yourself, before that.
Sure. My name is Levi Norton. I currently work at Edward Jones as a financial advisor, but I spent the last three years as a mathematics teacher at St. Helens High School.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Why are you interested in serving with the question? I graduated from St. Helens High School in 2017. I've lived in the community my entire life. I spent three years as a teacher because I truly love our community and our school a lot. I decided that teaching necessarily wasn't for me, but I'm really having a hard time not being involved in some way because I am unable to culture do any of those things as much as I would like to. So I saw an opening and I thought it would be a good use of my skills.
So what do you see as the role of the budget committee?
Having never served on one, I don't know that I could accurately tell you what the role of the budget committee is. I think that with any public budget, like a school district has, I think it's important that you hear from a lot of people in the community, whether that's students, teachers, administrators, parents. And I think that just like it's kind of the role of the school board in a way, to hear from community members and kind of take that under advisement and make the decision that they think is best for the community and the people in it.
All right. So tell us what your financial budget background is.
Yeah, so I graduated from Portland State in 2020 with a bachelor's of science in mathematics. So I'm kind of a numbers person. But I recently, in the last six months, went through training at Edward Jones, which means I have a Series 7 and Series 66 license. So I have a pretty good financial background and a pretty good numbers background overall. I can't say that I, well, I did work at Red Apple for five years and ran a department there. So I did deal with budgets quite a bit when I was there, but I can't say that my budget background is really extensive. But I can't say the financial background and the mathematical background is pretty big.
What do you see as the budget priorities for this coming year?
I don't know that I'm coming into it with any thoughts. Obviously, we just built a school and we're building another school. That's obviously a kind of a big undertaking. And then dealing with, I know there's, or has been talks of renovating baseball fields or different things like that as well. So I think there's a lot of big purchases that we've made or plans that we have that we need to make sure that we're staying on top of. Obviously, I know that staffing is an issue, or has been an issue, and finding teachers and holding teachers has been a problem. So I don't know if that's part of what the budget committee opts about as well, but I definitely see staffing and then the instructions that they want.
I don't think I necessarily have any questions of you guys. Yeah, there was a lot of information in the application process that I read through, so it seems pretty straightforward. You guys, is there anything that I should know, I guess? Is there anything important? What am I getting myself into there?
A great opportunity to be a voice of the community and learn how the interworking of the school facilities.
You're usually so.
Trying to be started on the budget committee. Yes. And it's a good place to start a public service because it's not month after month, night after night, hour after hour of time. You can begin to select. It's a great spot to be able to see what is involved a little bit. Just tonight, you've seen a little bit more of the school working than previous to that. And you begin to become aware of all that's involved in public service, whether it's city, county, state, all of the school board. There are many different ones as well. It's a, it is a good opportunity to do, to get started and get to know people.
All right. So we have one more question for you. Do you have a preference in serving a two or a three-year child?
I do not have a preference. I don't care either.
All right.
Whatever's best for you was for me, so.
Ten minutes.
Never leave. Just keep hanging in there.
Okay. So I'm for you.
Thank you.
I thought I surprised my children and they very much appreciated the work that you did. So I'm extraordinarily excited to do this, especially interesting to serve the district.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Couple pretty good kids. No, yeah, I appreciate that a lot. It wasn't because of the kids that I had to switch jobs. So I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you so much. In addition to Levi applying, Heidi Clark, who served as our budget committee chair, submitted an application. She had picked a one-year term as her trial period. So she's interested in serving again and indicated a preference for a two-year term. So during the time of court action, if someone would like to appoint Levi to position for the board, we'll both do so and Heidi could either take position for her too. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you'd like to find a student representative.
I'm not eighteen yet. I'll be eighteen until three, four weeks.
It was really fun having, it was really fun having a student representative. So you can try to work with the principals to identify someone with the age and register to vote.
She'll be eighteen next January.
No way, no way.
Not next January.
No, next January.
Because she's a year old.
Yeah.
Because she's a junior. She, there's no way she'll go to the.
That includes my section of four.
Okay. Then we will go on to 6.4, sorry. Our superintendent report was Scott Stockwell.
Okay, I've got a couple items and two kind of follow-up items, but let's start with, let's start with three follow-up items. The student investment account grant and early literature, literacy, gratification. Those two items, we went over the last board meeting and I think a time before as well. One thing that we need to do is we need to have them approved by the board. We need to have them as an action item. So they're back on here. If you have any questions, and then we need to have them as an action item. So there's really no change. Anything that you've seen or heard before, you've received the applications probably more than once. It's just one of those steps the state wants to make sure.
I thought you found the card now?
Oh, okay. We just made one copy in case.
Oh, okay.
They've been emailed. Everything's there. So questions on those. Check that off a little bit. All right. More importantly, classified employee appreciation week declaration. And we had the week, we declared after. It seems different, but we recognize them and make sure that they're recognized for the hard work that they do. And we've done some work to make sure that they know that. But as for, you go through the where app. You want me to read this now or do you want me to read it during the?
Oh, well, I guess it is later in the action items. We can hold on.
Hold on.
Okay, sure. Yeah, let's do that.
We'll read it during the action items and then you guys can go to the rest of them.
Okay.
That.
Instruction update.
Oh, don't forget to.
Brings a instruction update. But this is where there's a couple of items. Right in the clicker?
Oh, yes.
So the first item up here, following up on snow days, weather, met with our leadership team and they are recommending the last few days. And I know there's a question about, is that the best days for us to cancel? And we just added the three points we felt were both salient. Most time for families to plan and adjust, it's easiest to remember that after May 22nd, there are no more early release days and will have the least impact on our professional burn schedule. So we left the last board meeting thing, take back your team, talk about it. We went through a number of dates and really felt like this would be the least intrusive for everyone. So this is what we're hoping to do before, but we can have an updated calendar for you at the next board meeting. But I want to throw that out there for further discussion.
I trust in our administrators. So if that happens or any of the time factors, I understand the application. The students miss those days early in the year. The end of the year seems like we've lost them.
We're just going to clean up our desks.
I understand the points. I understand the plan of the just, it would be easier to remember. From a learning standpoint, students will gain more value if they're there. But I appreciate that. Perhaps there may be more time for students to get help for seniors or high school students that get those last credits taken care of. And if they are taking time to empty desks, how they have that kind of little take instruction.
Just to confirm, is this best for elementary schools or is this for everybody?
This is, this is for everyone.
Oh, okay.
But you're correct. It's only our elementary schools that are short the hours. And I, we don't have on there the additional 14 hours. That's a lot of the state. But 14 hours gives us people five hours that we need to make up.
Which is where the.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. So I only give you one. That's fine.
Sure, just thinking, you're only going to sit on the hour. It's not very long.
So the only thing I have is, have we asked the bus guys just to make sure that they're all good on stage? Go down and ask them.
Did GM begin me?
Yeah, they have it. Yeah.
Well, they're, they know that we're re-seeing some or some on Tuesdays, so they're just waiting for the final days.
But June 6th is not accurate. It's June 7th. So there's a title.
Do we know what day graduation is?
Seven.
Well, she's got that one down.
No hesitation. All right.
I think it's GM. I'm gonna do about that phrase. On the wall, all of the elementary schools, when I talk to you after, have a competition for this. That would mean with the high school, would that affect so?
No, but it rhymes with glow and has another syllable.
As long as it's not snow, you're good.
Okay, here we go.
There we go.
Wanted to flip back out the proposed schedule. Do want to note that I was reminded multiple times by our faculty, two o'clock, not 2:15 is what the old times were for 7:45 to two. I, just based on what we just experienced and the fact that we talk quite often more about wanting to have more time in seats, that does push it towards six and a half hours rather than six and a quarter hours. So it is a little bit longer, but we do have additional specialists for teachers of this concern with plan time. And really that was the move, is four, was four more plan time. And if we have specialists, a couple of that, I think we'll be comfortable with that time. So a little bit more, I did do this, I looked through those parallels in other districts. There were very, maybe one or two, one or two below 6.5 hours at the elementary level. And I believe either one of those schools. And I believe either one of those schools have, uh, early release Wednesday. I think this is better, I suppose. So questions on this before we begin moving forward? So we're, we're adopting this. If you're willing to start messaging this to the community, when? After February. Yeah, construction. Does this Jan mean it?
What, why you do that?
You need to go to the next slide.
You're like the guy at Jeopardy, going like this.
When you, when you do present that, can you put what time is out early on the Wednesday also?
Oh, yes, we would.
Okay.
Washington is late night Jeopardy.
Yeah.
You've seen all the calls.
And you have all the answers too.
Jeopardy comes on at midnight at two at our house.
Yeah, so now we can really drive.
Alright. So here's, here's our standard three monthly, uh, report on, on enrollment. You can see the red, we're down enrollment a little bit, but that's an average daily. The ADMR.
I'm okay.
With grace.
All I wanted is my phone so I can enlarge the picture.
I can't bring it, I was.
I do it too, so. I was way too much. You did, I'm good at that. I know how to catch myself. I'm good. No, and it didn't even hurt anything. That was impressive.
So it cost a few students.
Had a board.
Are you okay, Molly?
Yes, you know, getting money for me, so you're okay.
And I did want to include off to the side, I, I think I've lost it.
Can we jam it a little bit to get the volume?
And now my picture's already too.
The picture is the ceiling.
Actually, you got the walls just.
Off to the side, I included, um, the, the enrollment. So we see two thousand eight hundred ninety-one students are enrolled in the district. And then off the other number is the average daily attendance. So that includes when children are sick or when they're absent for various reasons. So that's why you do see those things left here.
Did those include virtual academy?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, so that, it's not like we're shifting numbers in and out, going just.
No, the, it also includes. Here we go. We've seen this before. This is the, uh, the lion. It's gonna be a, a steel plate silhouette. We've looked at this, gone around a number of different plans, decided that the original lion up here was nice, but it looked a little bit like, um, the park, which it, I believe was. So we've hired Paul Koke to do design for us. This is gonna go out front of the school. It'll be somewhere between an inch and two-inch thick piece of, uh, steel. It'll paint it up, and it will be, uh, a really nice art piece. So can we go to the next one? That's kind of the dimensions. Next, in there. So really like how that is kind of, a kind of, it is inclusive. And all the lines that we tend to see are nail-ons, big names. And I really like how Paul's kind of pulled that together. Um, there will be some minor adjustments, um, like the tail may be a little bit pointy for us. We may have to round that off to do a little bit of work, but really excited with the direction that he's going. And that'll be out front, uh, for the school representing lines. I think that's pretty cool. This is the baseball field, which was spoke about a little bit ago, um, by Mr. Norton. The plan is for the baseball field to begin is the fall. Construction will start in the fall with baseball field and the softball field, the next, next one on there. Um, then go to the next slide, uh, with, that's. Okay, well, you go back. Back one more, maybe. One more?
Oh, no.
It's not there. Okay, so go ahead and roll forward. So we have the two softball fields to be turf. I did want to start talking about, we're at the point of the construction of the first phase, where we're beginning to walk through and trying to make sure we've identified everything that needs to be changed and addressed. And so prior to passing the second bond, there were multiple items that we value engineered out. We didn't include, and we're going back and making sure that we add those. So when students come back, staff come back, community come back in, they see that they've got a great, a great school for passing two bonds and not having access to it for, for five years, right? We want to have a good problem. So here's an example, and I wanted this one first because this is one thing that Melody has asked for multiple times. You see that green trail between, that is gonna be newly paved, and that will later be removed because of cost now with that additional funding that's going back in.
Now you can wear high heels from graduation, back and say the bow then to hug your senior and not leave your eel back at home.
That's right. Okay, go to the next slide.
It's dangerous for me already.
So these are, um, some locker room shots, and kind of the old orange nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty construction. Those, because they were cut away and still usable, although ugly, and I would suggest maybe a little dirty after forty-plus years, right? Um, those will now be replaced. And so we're going back through and cleaning those things up, and I just wanted to make note of that. Go ahead and go to the next one. Um, those are more yellow, orange caps, I believe. And then this is a, a shot of the locker rooms. So the locker rooms, they're being redone, and as we've added things back, it's adjusted the timeframe. One of the things when we walked through the locker rooms with the oversight committee, we were planning on keeping the lockers, and they were looking like old lockers. So we made some decisions to swap those out, but because we've made those decisions later, and when we could afford them with the second bond, we won't be getting those lockers in until the summer. We may have students using them before the new lockers are put in place. The other part in there, the green section up is the floors. Nothing was gonna be done to the floors. They're gonna remain the cement that they currently were. So now we're gonna go through and polish them and put a sealer on them, so it cleans them up. So when you walk in there, it'll look like, you know, a new facility, not, gosh, we have new lockers, new ceiling tiles, all painted nicely, new bathrooms, and the floor looks like nineteen seventy-five.
Will the coaches' office be down in class?
Coach's office, I'm not sure about how much we get machines in to polish the floors, but I know the.
But at least it's down in the, sort of, for sure.
The other part on here is the carpeting in the auditorium. We also added new seating in the auditorium as well, which we're excited about. So that'll be really looking like a, a new facility when we walk in there, so it's exciting. And things that we're able to do now, since we have that second bond passed, our community community, so. Okay, next. This is a, kind of the last thing that I want to talk about as far as about construction piece. I've shared this before. We're working on having a timeline, and the intent of the timeline is to really demonstrate that there's a tradition and a culture of success and excellence in the school district. So that's gonna be when you walk in to the, to the high school. And what we've decided, I've been working with Alan Hall back at the Historical Society. He's gathering some pictures. I've been taking pictures from old annuals. And the plan right now is, uh, we'll partner with Stacy. We're gonna push up to the community and ask for folks who have pictures from nineteen hundred to nineteen ten, nineteen ten to nineteen twenty, so we'll have some categories. And ask if others have maybe some pictures that demonstrate great things that were going on at our high school. We don't want just athletics or just band. We want to see kids excited about graduating. We want to see kids active in classes, beginning from the nineteen hundreds when we started as a school, high school, into the two thousands. And so we'll ask community members to submit photos. We'll run a little bit of a competition. And the competition will be as a board. You will select the pictures that will go up above the wall. So it should be kind of that. I did include the next slides, our slides, there we go. So this, this is the nineteen twenty-one St. Els High School baseball team. From the nineteen twenty-one annuals. It's kind of fun looking through. Go to the next slide. I think that's the twenty-one trap team. Next. That is the twenty, I think it's twenty-one girls, twenty-two, um, girls basketball team.
They're state champs.
They were champions, exactly. And it's interesting because I read an article, gosh, maybe it was a half a year, a year ago, in the Oregonian about, um, a school in the metro area had the first girls basketball team starting in the seventies. This is from the months, so, yeah. This, I think, is, that, that's the basketball. Yeah, that's the basketball team in twenty-three. There's the girls, there's the champs there. Phil's kind of angry. There's a reason why, intimidation. And this is the band, and I kind of lose the track of the day. I think it's the twenty-four, I keep going. Another band, try. No band. chemistry class, class fifties maybe.
I don't know, we're still using that stuff.
Yeah, probably. Not sure what that is.
Could be.
There's signs more, or debate, debate, yeah, okay, next. Dencing. I think that's in the forties. You try to stay away from one.
I bet the label would be really.
I think that's construction of Honda.
Yeah, on the pool side.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, that was some actors from the fifties. I think that was student government. Because they didn't have like digital cameras where everybody could snap away, most of the pictures I'm finding are like this. They're not actioned. So that's why I'm hoping, reaching out to the community, there'll be some action photos that we can put in the front lawn. Okay, go ahead. There's a football touchdown. Yeah, there's a little dash.
Alex, that's a really solid old one.
I think we had to include that. That's the first wrestling I found. That's the, I think that's the annual. It's the John Young story.
Is that Carden? I look like Carden was Jim.
Oh, it might be Carden.
No, it's got the upper part. Check it out, okay.
Now this picture is, that, that trophy is for second place in state football, nineteen fifty-six.
Just before they moved into the high school, huh?
To pass another trophy around. And that, I think, eighth state basketball champion. That, uh, I think so. Looks like. Part of that, okay, right, go ahead and stop for that there now. We'll, we'll look again. So anyway, you guys get the idea of what we're looking for. We'll have a work session. We'll have all the pictures out, and you'll decide where they're gonna go. We'll work with Alan. Alan does more pictures as well. We'll be done actually tomorrow at the oversight meeting. I'm gonna share a little bit of the thinking better and stuff. I don't think that I wanted to share, um, not everyone gets a chance to tour the building. It's very exciting. I think our community is gonna be really pleased with the product. Stacy Vindosa did a great job. Some of you may have seen this already. Um, but I just grabbed one of her, uh, video clips that she puts together. This is from, I think, February twenty-eighth, so two weeks ago. Not a ton of changes, but, so, I'm gonna play that, hopefully it works. That's kind of quick glimpse. We're hoping to have a soft, kind of opening, um, I believe the first part of May. So we'll give tours for anyone who wants to walk through. That, we'll try to look.
Alright. Alright, well then we'll go on to seven point oh, our visitors to address the board. And this is the time for a public comment on agenda items. So then we will then go on to eight point oh, action items. And our eight point one is the budget committee appointments. And so on that one, do we need to do them separately, or do we, can we do the two together? No, I meant our budget committee appointments. Can we just say the names?
I'd probably do it separate. I will move to appoint Levi Norton to position four.
Okay, but moved in second to appoint Levi Norton to our position number four on our budget committee. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. We, do we?
Heidi Quin.
If we would need to edit it, right?
I will move to, uh, appoint Heidi Quin to position one.
Okay, we've been second to, um, put appoint Heidi Quin again to our position number one on our budget committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Then eight point two is to approve the SIA. Been moved in second to accept the SIA grant. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Eight point three, approve the early literature grant application. She's funny. Alright, so it's been moved in second to approve the early literature grant application. All those in favor say aye. And last one is our eight point four, our classified employee appreciation proclamation. Don't you need to announce it and say it first before we approve it?
Right, so classified employee appreciation week is near, near to my heart. My wife, my mother, and my son were all classified employees. Alright, so classified employee. All right, so classified employee appreciation week declaration. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees were directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and reconstruction of students. And whereas our community depends upon the trust, depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talent and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore, be resolved, St. Els School Board of Directors proclaim March 4th through 8, 2024, be classified employee appreciation week. And be further resolved that St. Els Board of Directors, strong as a part of the community, join in this service and recognize the dedication and hard work of these individuals year-round. Adopted this 13th day of May, welcome on March 2024.
And move to group. All right, it's been moved in second to accept action item 8.4, classified employee appreciation announcements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
I thought we should stop.
Yay. All right, well then last one is 9.0, is our upcoming meeting input, which is April 10th, 2024, board week session, work session at 6:30 PM. And our 2024 budget priorities, pardon me. That's everything?
Oh, that's right, bring it back, we're bringing back our homework.
Okay, are we good? All right, and with that, our adjournment. Drive carefully, just because it's.